Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And Kate, welcome. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gelderlos.
President.
Maryanga.
President.
Norhug.
Here.
Steenchar.
Here.
Truce.
Here.
Vanderwool.
President.
Mayor Mas.
Here. Well, tonight for the invocation, we have Pastor Dave Christian, who happens to be a relative of mine. And he didn't know he was giving the invocation until 30 seconds ago. But you know what? I know he's always ready. So David, pastor, welcome. For those of you who wish, I invite you to stand for the invocation. We're going to follow that with the Lord's believers.
I thought about bringing my cellphone up here, but what could it say?
I don't know.
I mean, I could suck my thumb, but let's just jump in.
There you go.
Thank you, Father God, for putting us in this wonderful city. And we commit our way to you. And we thank you for our government. And we ask you, Lord, to bless and guide each of these men and women on this council making decisions that affect all of us. And we ask, Lord, that you would hear us as we commit our way to you and ask you for wisdom. The wisdom that comes from above. First, peaceable, gentle, easy to be entreated, without partiality, without hypocrisy. And the fruit of righteousness is sown in peace of them that make peace. In Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thank you very much for being available on this first moment like that. Appreciate it. Do we have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting? Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Some support? Any discussion? All those in favor of approving, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. You also have the minutes from our last meeting, October 13. You've had a chance to look at those. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? So support and support. Anything anybody wants to comment on? Additionals, corrections, anything like that? And if not, all those in favor of approving, please say yes. Yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. We also have bills in the amount of just over a million dollars type. Griffin, anything you'd like to point out before we open it up for questions?
Yeah, thank you. Just a few invoices to point out this meeting. One is from Aetna Supply in the amount of $51,925. If you all will remember, Aetna is the company that we are going to be purchasing water meters from to do the replacement project this upcoming year. This $50,000 was for an initial order of 350 water meters. Part of this is we need to start building up the initial inventory of those meters so we can have them all in place come next year when we need to start replacing them. So that's what that invoice is. Moving on, we have Precision Concrete Inc. in the amount of $40,000. This is the annual contracted sidewalk trip hazard removal, or what you think of as the sidewalk grinding that takes place once a year in town. They go through the year. We create a list of those that were concerned about being trip hazards. The DPW goes out and does inspections of various parts of the city. And once a year, we get those ground down. So that's what that $40,000 is. I'm probably going to butcher this vendor name, so I apologize. But Kleinoff Limited in the amount of $164,894.70. This was the sidewalk plow that was approved back on August 11. And then finally, there's a couple lines for West Michigan Office Interiors totaling just shy of $50,000, about $48,000. And that is the new furniture that was also approved back on August 11. And if you all haven't had a chance to see it yet, would like to, please let me know. And me or anyone else on staff is happy to walk you back and show you some of the updates that have been done to the finance office, the conference room. And then probably in another week or so, we'll be wrapped up over here. So those are the bills I have to highlight today. Or I'm happy to answer questions about any others if there are any.
Any questions for Griffin on any of the bills? Yeah.
Is Precision Concrete a new vendor for us for sidewalks?
I...
No, they've been doing it for about 10 years.
Okay. What's the other concrete?
Precision Concrete is like, just does the grinding of the concrete and helps us does the actual replacement of the concrete.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, thank you.
And that's the vendor name we hear a lot when we replace sidewalks and curbs and stuff.
Any other questions for Griffin? If not, is there a motion to approve the bills tonight in the amount of $1,053,801.78?
Some move?
Support.
Any final questions? Not. Kate, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Maryanga.
Yes.
Norhug.
Yes.
Steenchar.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwool.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Mayor Mas.
Yes. Time for public comment. Anybody here tonight like to address the council? Please just come on up to the podium, give us your name, address, and tell us what you're thinking about. Anybody? Quiet group tonight. Last call. Public comment. Kyla, did you have anything?
The only thing I really have is we had been awarded the grant from Consumers Energy, and the 10 trees were delivered. And we planted them on October 11. We had quite a group. And most of them are north of Chicago Drive and east of Wilson. There's a few that are just behind, like, First Reformed Church on Grand Street. But it was a lot of students, and that was a really nice thing to see, that there were some young people getting involved too. My granddaughter, so I'm like, first time ever. So that was really nice. But they'd gone through the planting class, and then they were out there to plant trees. So those went in successfully.
Good. Thanks for all you do. Anybody else? Okay. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. An approval of this would be in the best interest of the city because there are some purchases on there and memos. One, a plow for the dump truck, a plow for the pickup truck, and also a mobile fingerprinting unit for the police department. We also have reports from September, the investment in EMS player. Looks like a really busy month again. And the minutes from the Environmental Sustainability Committee and Park and Recreation Board. There's September meetings and the Planning Commission, October meeting. We also have a couple proclamations. One is the Family Court Awareness Month, one, which you've had a chance to take a look at. And also the First Responder Day, which is tomorrow. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda in the best interest of the city? Or anybody have any comments or questions on any of the items?
Motion to approve.
Motion?
Support.
And support. No questions? Kate, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Norhug.
Yes.
Steenchar.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwool.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Maryanga.
Yes.
Mayor Mas.
Yes. Griffin, city managers report all right?
Thank you. So only two items on there this evening, and not looking for action necessarily on either of them. The first one is the board and commission vacancy list. We're getting to that time of the year for the city council to start to consider appointments and/or reappointments to the various boards and commissions. So the city clerk, like normal, has prepared an updated list of those board members who are going to be seeking reappointment, vacancies that exist, and so on and so forth. So please feel free to take a look at that and reach out if you have any questions. And I would anticipate we'll bring that back closer to the end of the year and ask the council to consider making appointments to the various boards and commissions. But on that same note, we felt like the timing was right with the bringing of that list, that we have compiled kind of a spreadsheet for you that you'll see in the packet. I guess I want to start out by just thanking the city clerk. Marcy did a lot of work putting that together for us. But one of the priorities identified during our goal-setting workshop in 2025 was to take a look at the various committee structures, roles, and responsibilities. My understanding from having some conversations with you all and trying to reflect back on the goal-setting and why that was included on there is there might be some interest in exploring opportunities to combine certain committees that are less active and/or eliminating some committees that may no longer be relevant. So I wanted to start by just preparing you all kind of an overview list of the various boards, commissions, committees that the city has. And you can see, you know, which ones are created by state law that we have to have, which ones have been created by action of the council. And really just want to leave that with you all, barring any additional conversation you all may want to have this evening. But ultimately, staff will really be looking from guidance on the city council in regard to next steps if there is interest in kind of pursuing additional exploring in regard to combining or potentially eliminating certain committees. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I can do the best. I can kind of discuss what Marcy helped put together, and we can go from there.
Any initial thoughts, councilmembers of all, about this list? I mean, it just struck me that some, I mean, we have to have them. Like, it's not a very active board, but the Election Commission. We, that can't, I'm not sure that can really be combined or certainly can't be eliminated. And some are already kind of together, like the zoning board of appeals and the housing board authority. I feel there's some that you maybe were thinking could be combined, or your thoughts?
You know, I think I'm always, I mean, willing to make some suggestions. I mean, I think the biggest one I would throw out is we have a few different economic development-related boards, thinking about brownfield, thinking about business relations, and so on and so forth, that my understanding over the last handful of years have not been particularly active. There may be some benefit in exploring combining some of these boards, just so instead of theoretically having 15 or 16 different volunteers appointed to them that are only meeting once every handful of years, maybe you have seven volunteers, and we're just using their time a little bit more effectively in terms of maybe they're meeting once or twice a year. But I also, I think, will be the first to step back a little bit and still go. I'm obviously still very new, and there are plenty of these that I don't necessarily know the history that you all may know in terms to their involvement in town. And I definitely don't want to be disrespectful to our volunteers, just throwing out ways to, you know, change all of their lives. But just, I think from an effectiveness and efficiency standpoint in terms of staff, I think there's some opportunities. But I would also say, you know, Mayor, you're absolutely right. There are plenty of these, you know, Board of Review, LOC C, the various ZVA, Construction Board of Appeals, we're all required to have by law. There's really nothing we can do with those. But I'm definitely happy to discuss more, explore more if there is interest in pursuing that. Otherwise, there's absolutely nothing wrong with continuing to do it the way you all have been doing. Just felt like this was the appropriate first step in terms of trying to give you all as much information as possible related to that goal we established earlier.
What? Do you give it some more thought?
The only other updates I had for this evening were I wanted to provide the city council a brief update on the challenging water main break we had towards the end of last week. And Charlie, please feel free to interrupt me if I'm misspeaking or missing something. But sent a note to you all towards the end of last week that we had a pretty challenging water main break in between Ponderosa and Wentworth. At that location on the east side of town, part of the water main actually goes under the creek there. And because of the amount of rain we got last week, the location of the creek, we really did not have any, we had no way to know there was any kind of leak until we started to hear from some residents about water pressure being impacted. We were able to get out there in some pretty challenging conditions, able to locate it relatively quickly. But unfortunately, just because of where it was located, the immediate fix we had to take was actually cutting the loop and capping both ends to maintain pressure in the system so we didn't have to get to a position of needing to do boil water notices and different things like that. So for right now, that's one of the parts of our system that's looped. That loop has been disconnected, both ends are at. Everybody has water pressures fine, and we will likely have to have some conversations moving forward about reconnecting that loop and figuring out the best way to de-water that area to access the pipe there. So in the short term, that situation has been addressed. Big thanks to Department of Public Works. I know that's one of those days when it's 40 degrees and rainy, and they're digging in wet water and mud that I just, and I don't envy them and just am appreciative for everything they do. But we will likely have to have some additional conversations in the future about where that water main break took place. So I don't know if there are any questions for Charlie, or Charlie, if I missed anything on that one, but...
You mentioned it all.
Yeah. We did the best we could given kind of the challenging location, and we'll continue to handle that one. And then the only other update I wanted to share is just kind of a friendly reminder that next meeting on November 10 will be the last meeting for some of our council members and the first meeting for some individuals that will get elected and/or reelected next week. As a friendly reminder, we're going to be doing pictures for council members that afternoon prior to the meeting. So if you weren't here at the last meeting, I think we had everybody, but please make sure that's on your calendar. And then I've also heard from a couple people that there might be some pre-scheduled conflicts in attending on that day. Because of that, we're looking to be pretty close to quorum. So if you can be there that day, please try to, just so we can have the first half of the meeting prior to the swearing-in of new council members. And I know we're also looking into bringing a potential resolution to extend the period of time per the city charter to have a couple new city council members sworn in just due to some conflicts. The charter is really restrictive in terms of the window of time when people can be sworn in following the election and do some pre-scheduled events. We're working through that. So just stay tuned that we will likely be bringing a resolution at the next meeting to give those people a little bit more ability to do the other things they have going on in their life. I think that's everything I have this evening. Happy to answer any questions, and it's good to see everybody.
Good to see you. Okay. Councilmember comments? Randy, let's start with you tonight.
Well, I have a few things. Rarely do I try to say a lot because I come from the school of thought that the less you say, the smarter you learn. But with that said, I am one of those people who will not make the November 10 meeting because I'm taking a long trip, long planned trip with my wife and I on the 5th. We're going out to Utah, Canyonlands, Diane, Rice, and the big five out there. So I will not be here. So I don't know if it's advantageous or not if I get sworn in early and we can do a Zoom call and I can still be present for the meeting. But with that said, got me thinking a little bit here that this will be the last night that this council is together. So I wanted to give a couple thanks. First of all, Paul, I wanted to thank you for your eight and a half years of service because I will not be able to do this at the next meeting with you, and he needs to be here, so there's important. More importantly, I just think back of, I was looking back, you were appointed, I think, in April or March of 2017, where you've served about eight and a half years. Thank you. But you've also served for numerous years in volunteer positions, the Fourth of July, all of that. And I just want to thank you for your service, like any board. We're not always 100% on the same page, but that is the process. And I am here to be commended to your service for Granville for many, many years. I appreciate you being here. Justin, I would say the same to you. You served two terms or eight years, I believe, active on the library board and historical committee. And we had a few long meetings because of your desire to rework the RV ordinance, which was quite a long drawn-out process, but we were successful in that. And to you, thank you for your commitment and your service, and you're to be commended for your care for this city as well. So I will not have the opportunity to tell you guys that a couple weeks from now. So thank you very much. And there's many, many, many other people who give so much to this city. I was looking out here, Carolyn, you've done a fine job, a good job on the planning commission. Kyla, thank you for your work on the tree board. I think back a little bit about the zone board review, house member, poll, and timber. There's a lot of people who work behind the scenes that make this a great community. It's easy to be up here, but you realize after a while that the hard work is really downed out in the trenches. So to everybody, thank you. I hate to go down this road, but you start to mention people because you always forget one name, and then, back to my first point, will I should say this? But anyway. And then just reflecting a little bit, I think, and if you guys, you can jump in if I'm wrong, but I've had the privilege of serving with three managers, Crownbeam, Durham, Griffin. Four police chiefs, Snyder, Santos, Steer, and Anglo. Was there one in between you guys, Steer? I didn't think so. Few treasures, Tom Ginter, Tammy Hartman, Jane. Couple clerks. Two mayors, Buck and Moss. I was thinking today, and I think you've been a great mayor. We ran against each other back in the day. There was a, and I hope you can appreciate, this is just humor, and you were correct. I appreciate a little bit of Winnie the Pooh humor back in the day. And I don't know if you remember that, but it was like Pollyanna or Eeyore, right? But I just want to say, you've done an excellent job as a mayor, creating the positive vibe and the social positivity that this community needs. So thank you for your work. Wrapping this up. And hopefully I make it successful in my next election. But if not, I will not be here to say goodbye, so hello. But I hope to see you soon. And just serving Granville and this community has been one of the greatest opportunities and pleasures I've ever had in my life. So thank you. And thank you too for serving so much. That's it. I'm going to make our shortest meeting ever tonight.
I'm going to pass on conference until next meeting.
Justin?
All right. Well, I have about 14 pages prepared for next week, but if you won't be here next week, I can reduce it a little bit. So I just want to start off with Randy, thanking you so much. It's been an honor to serve alongside you. I have greatly appreciated your realistic view on things, your no-nonsense approach, and your willingness to bring things to light that need to be brought to light. There were times where you would ask a question, and I thought, oh, why did I not think of that ahead of time? And so I have just always greatly appreciated that. And even though I won't be up here, when the next round of council members this year, I do hope that you are. So thank you for all that you've done for the community. And Mayor Mas, I know you won't be here at the next meeting, so I also want to extend my deep gratitude to you. Just like Randy said, you have done a phenomenal job. One reason I ran for council in the first place was because I felt that civility within politics in our society was crumbling, and we needed to restore that. And I could not think of a better mayor to have when it comes to running our council with an approach of civility and servant leadership. You have been blessed in your life, and you share those blessings with people in many different ways. But one of the greatest ways that you have shared those blessings is the gift of time. You gave that to me as a council candidate, as a council member, as a teacher. So I'm just so grateful for all that you have done, and it's been a pleasure serving alongside both of you. So thank you.
Tom?
Yeah, Kyla, I think I heard you say you had lots of volunteers to help plant those trees. And what I love about Kyla is she sent me a text saying, are you going to be there planting the trees because we really need help the day before? So way to recruit, lady. You did a great job. All right? Randy, my odds are on you to win reelection, so I'm just going to say thanks for your comments, but you're sitting in a solid spot. And Utah rocks, you know, you're going to see them.
I find out being whack, but thank you to you for the guy who gave me a two-year fourth sabbatical.
I really didn't want it to enter. It happened, so...
We have so much more in common than this.
That's all.
That's a good laugh. I didn't come prepared to make long speeches. I'm impressed at your page total, Councilman Norhug. I'm only on page five right now on my own closing remarks for next time around. But I'd just like to say thank you to Councilman Gelderlos for your very generous and gracious comments. Very much appreciate it. And thank you for your service. I too think that you will be back, so I don't think this is your last meeting. So if I'm wrong about that, I'll say a lot more nice things next time around. But other than that, I just want to thank you from the heart for that, and it's been a pleasure to serve with you. And Steve, I know you're going to be back, even though you won't be at the next meeting. And, you know, it's been a pleasure and an honor to serve with you as well. So good with that. Thank you.
Yeah, much like Josh, I'm going to deflect my comments the next time. Hopefully, when Patsy's here and Justin's family's here, and we can have some weeping eyes in the crowd, you know? It's kind of the goal of that. So I will just say briefly, thank you for your service, both of you. Looking forward to the next couple of weeks, both personally, professionally, and amongst the setting. So good luck to everybody that's running. And, by the way, may the odds be ever in your favor. So that's it.
Well, Justin, I have a confession to make. I have something that belongs to you, and I've had it in my garage for eight years. And this is a sign that you used when you first ran for Granville City Council. Finally, I'm returning that. So I actually have a speech written, which I don't usually do, but I want to get it right. And I also will not be here at the next meeting. So Justin, when I learned that you were going to be a candidate for the Granville City Council, I was a little bit concerned because I read some of your social media posts. And I knew that you have very strong feelings and convictions about political matters. And I was just a little worried that maybe you would make serving on the Granville City Council kind of a platform for your own political ideology. I don't know if you remember, but I called you up, invited you out to the cottage, and for dinner with your family, we had a heart-to-heart talk and honest talk. And after that, I was certain that you really did have a heart to serve the people who live in our town. And you've proved time and time again that that is the truth over the last eight years that you've been on the council. I remember there was an issue that we were going to vote on here at the city council that was probably going to be really close. In fact, I think there was one council member absent at that time, and it looked like the vote was going to be tied. And I knew exactly how you wanted the vote to go. But you suggested that we wait until the absent council member be there, even though I think you knew that when that person came back, you probably would not get your way. The vote would probably not go the way that you wanted it to go. But you, as a matter of principle and fairness, thought we ought to defer that vote until we had a full council decision. And at that point, there was just no doubt that you were a man of integrity and principle. And I was so impressed, and I still am after all these years. When you first elected, were elected when you were running, I think, you said you were only going to serve a maximum of eight years. And I think I've told you in the meantime, I hope that you reconsider. But you are a man of integrity and principle, and you do keep your word. So yeah. I'm going to miss you, and I'm grateful for your genuine servant heart and all that you've done. And you're a deep thinker, and I really appreciate everything that you've done. And Paul, I'm going to miss you as well. You have spent most of your life in public service. working with U.S. Senator Carol Levin and all the, and serving his constituents. And you've served here, your constituents in Granville. I can't imagine the number of hours you've put in helping make Granville's parade a big event and successful event it is. I don't know how many years you worked on that. How many years did you work on it?
Fifteen or sixteen total.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And the hours you've spent here on the council and as a board member for the Rapid and many other things. And so I appreciate everything that you've done. And it's been an honor to work with you, and I hope that we can continue to work with you on the Rapid, because you have an important role there, so... And Randy, I don't have a speech about you, because I expect you to be back. And if not, I'll have a... I'll see you after we come back.
You're not later.
All right. I think that's all I've got. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Support.
And motion, support. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Great, thank you, everybody. Thanks for showing up tonight.